That would be simple to find, but.
All right, Trent, we're ready to rule.
All righty, we now have a quorum. So let's call the San Juan County Planning Commission meeting for July the 11th to order. Those in attendance, commission, Melissa Rig and Austin, Shane Walker, Trent Schaefer, and Cody Nielsen.
And we also have TC Garcia online.
Okay. Staff attendants. Kristin Bushnell, Jen Nelson, Mac Purdon.
Mac's not here yet, but hopefully soon online.
Okay. All right. Cody, you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Of all of the things on our agenda tonight, has anybody got a conflict interest?
No.
Okay. Nor I. Okay, everybody read, those were actually short minutes.
Look, I'm not transcribing everything, we're summarizing from here on out, so you guys don't have 200-page packets.
All right, let's address the commission, the planning commission meeting from June the 13th first. Do you have any comments on that?
I don't know if we want to review it at all. Have control of the mouse.
Nice.
I didn't see anything.
Okay.
I didn't either.
I didn't. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And a motion.
A second.
And a second to approve the minutes from the San Juan County Planning Commission meeting on June the 13th, 2024. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. A work session meeting from June the 24th.
Looks good.
I didn't see anything other. Motion.
I move that we approve the work session meeting minutes from Jan- from June 24th.
Okay.
A second of those.
And a second. All those in favor of the work session minutes from June the 24th, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Trent, can I say something about the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we got this one on Tuesday night, and it had some issues that are really important to bluff on it. And I didn't get to it until last night, so I looked at the bylaws, and the bylaws say we should get it at least three nights, three days before. And I really want staff to work toward that. You know?
We've talked about it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand why it just can't be a hard, hard rule, you know? People have to have their stuff to staff by such and such day, and staff will have the agenda to the planning commission by Sunday or Monday night at the latest.
Okay.
It's, it just is too tight.
Okay.
Noted.
Are there some other reasons that we might not be aware of why it
I mean, our public, our public notice is only 24 hours, so that's what I'm really shooting for, quite honestly.
But our bylaws say.
Right, but as far as applications from the, from applicants coming in.
Most of these have all been on
They've been on the books.
Right.
So we'll, we'll push for that.
Thank you.
Once we get our ordinances passed, that should be able to be accomplished all the time. Okay, public comment. We'll take public comment from in-house first, then online.
I have about three minutes, so I'll try to keep brief.
Will you please state your name and your area that where you're from?
Good evening, my name is Steven Schultz. For those who don't know me, I'm from LaSalle, Utah. I've been a full-time resident for 34 years. I currently own seven parcels for a total of 52 acres, and I believe in LaSalle. So I just wanted to talk a little bit today about the lack of enforcement in the current zoning codes and how it affects me personally. In 2019, I decided to upgrade two rental units using funds from my 401K. I planned to purchase two new single-wide manufactured homes, came up with a plan, a budget, and approached the San Juan County Building Department. They said the units I considering were insufficient. They were only rated for a 30-pound snow load, they required a 35. So the snow loads come in every 10-pound increments, so I started shopping for a single-wide manufactured home with a 40-pound snow load. There were only a few manufacturers that offered such units with two-by-six walls and heavier roof trusses, and the cost was increased by about $22,000 a unit. The property already had power, water, and established residence, so it may have been possible to hook up the new units without a building permit or inspection, but I decided to comply and do the right thing. I purchased the heavier units. In fact, in 2020, I purchased a second unit. My tenants have been working couples, police officers, service staff, and Moab. So at the same time, the property directly behind me sold for $40,000. It had a tough shed, used as a wellhouse, so it had power and water. A young couple came in, started building a dwelling. I watched the construction every day. Their foundation was two-by-four floor joists on cinder blocks. They covered it with OSB and built it up from there. They added a second piece the next year, and they skinned this OSB shack in highly effective corrugated roofing, tin roofing. Then they sold this house, basically made with hardware store materials and a 10-pound snow load, at a handsome profit. The next couple who purchased it added another piece in 2022, installed a use septic tank without a permit, used an old fiberglass tank that had been sitting in the sun for years, and sold the property for $200,000. There was never a building permit, never an inspection. So every day, I walk through my backyard, and when the sun angles just right, I see a glaring example, pun intended, that sometimes building codes are ignored and seem to be optional. Myself, I pulled an extra 50K out of my 401 to comply with codes. The neighbors did the wrong thing, sold their dwelling, walked away with a good pen- no penalty and a substantial profit. So with property prices in Moab soaring, LaSalle seems to be a desirable alternative, but would-be buyers are routinely scared away by junk properties with ramshackle construction like this one. I prize personal freedoms and property rights, but the lack of code enforcement affects property values negatively. Any zoning code without uniform enforcement has a diminished value. Thank you.
We, we recognize that as a problem, and, and our things that have happened in the past, we can't correct.
I know, and it's a hard job. It's, it's hard to go tell people what you're doing here is illegal, and I'm not saying to go back, but
There's a new sheriff in town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trent.
Any other public comments? Any online?
Any online comments?
Hey, I'll, I'll speak up if you got a minute, Kristin.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hi, guys, this is TC Garcia. I apologize to the commission and the folks in the room for not being there in person tonight. Unfortunately, we had a family reunion scheduled back here in Boston, so, so I'm, I'm joining from back there for just as long as I can tonight, but the one thing I wanted to say to the, the folks in LaSalle, thank you guys so much for all your input and showing up to the county commission meeting last week. But I also tried to talk at, but couldn't get my Dagum computer off of, off of mute to, to speak there, but thank you for showing up, thank you for putting in your input. It's very much appreciated and definitely taken to heart. Like Bruce said, I think this commission and, and myself as well take personal property rights pretty seriously, hold it in the highest regard, and and definitely want to do, do what's right by not just our community out here in LaSalle, but also for the rest of the county. And, and hopefully at the end of this process, we have something that, that works and looks right to everybody, so. Again, sorry for not being there in person, but, but just wanted to say that right here up front, Kristin. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, and TC, you can still be a voting body tonight. Just make sure that you verbalize that online for us.
Copy that, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Administrative item.
So our, just an update for everybody. Obviously, things got pushed off. As far as our work on it, we're kind of done-ish until we can get it back from legal. We were really hoping to shoot for tomorrow to have it for next month. That has been pushed back until August 8th. Hopefully, we can have a legal review then, but that would put public hearings and such in September. So we're already quite a few months behind. In the meantime, we're going to push through what we can with our current ordinance, because there's been a lot of people waiting, several are here tonight, since December, January. And so we're going to do what we can to not hold up projects at this point in time, as long as they are legal and viable under our current ordinance, despite the fact that a lot of people are taking the road less traveled to get them pushed through. So we, a couple of things that have come to our attention that we will address once we have those legal documents back, we'll obviously revisit it as a planning commission. At that point in time, we'll schedule a community workshop for LaSalle. And there are a few areas, especially like Geyser Pass on the map, that we want to reevaluate. But for now, that's, we can sit that to the side until we get it back. As soon as I have it back, we'll amp it back up to get it legally adopted. The public is welcome to keep sending comments to my email. Email is best. You can call me, but I'll tell you to email me, just so that we have a, a written document of, and timestamp of comments and records.
Is there a copy of that draft available to the public?
Yes, so everything's online, and let me, let me show people one more time because we're still not finding it. So if you go to our website, under Departments, Planning and Zoning, it's the first thing that pops up. Here's all of our drafts. They say final because we're in the final stage. But please note that it is not legally adopted yet. So, and I highly encourage it. We've gotten a lot of comments from people that it seems like they have not looked at things at all. And they kind of come in sideways, and, and so please review these documents prior to comments so that we can actually make sense of your comments and that they, they mean something to us, because we are holding them in consideration. The other thing I'll say for that, just a quick disclaimer, there's been, I'm going to do it now. There's been quite a bit of misinformation posted on social media. We've been trying to monitor it and, and correct it where we can, but there's a lot of misinformation about this potentially changing mortgage rates, or insurance, or water rights, or taking your animals away. None of that is us. We do not do mortgages, we're not changing your insurance. Water rights is through Utah Division of Water. Your use stays the same, your taxes will be taxed on your use. And so just, I, I've had a lot of really angry people call me, and by the time they're done talking to me, they settle down a lot. But just know that that's, we don't get into those other areas. This is just zoning of an ideal situation that we would like to see 20, 30 years down the road. We're not coming to load up your sheep and so just settle down out there. And if you do have questions, call me, like, let's talk. Because we're not in a lot of that biz.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
So our first one, hopefully these guys are online. They live in the United Kingdom, but they spend half their time here. So this is consideration and approval of a conditional use permit, allowing for a primitive camp and RV park at the intersection of Highway 191 and Highway 262. From Lawrenth Sploett and Monica Cesari, sorry, I'm probably botching your name. You have two, two routes this could go tonight. Make a motion approving the conditional use, using the findings and conditions that's provided by staff, or if you want a plus and minus sum, that's fine, or you can make a motion denying based on finding the facts and reasoning. So on April, these guys have been waiting. On April 7th, the county received a conditional use permit application for a primitive camping and RV park at the intersection of Highway 191 and Highway 262. This is at the bottom of White Mesa Hill. There's parcel information. It is six, a little over six acres. We're going off of our 2011 ordinance and a 2013 zoning map, which zones it as highway commercial. The applicant is planning on improving the site. Right now, it's just raw land to include a loop access driveway, a reception, and shops, and shop station, a shower facility, two toilet facilities, 53 RV stalls, which do not have hookups, so this is just RV parking. And 22 parking spaces for overnight tent, tent campers, a dog park, and an RV dump. So let me show you before we dive in here, let me show you where this is at. So here's White Mesa. And as you come down the big hill, it is right here. So many of you are probably familiar with this gravel pit area. Current conditions down there, there's a lot of people that pull over and park there overnight. There's also a lot of people that pull out and, and go to the bathroom here. There's a lot of people that still buckets of gravel here. So it's kind of a industrial-esque nitty-gritty spot in this world that having some facilities, obviously people are tired and need a break at this spot quite a bit, so having some facilities is not too shabby of an idea. For those of you who aren't familiar with this, this is a road that goes out to McCracken Mesa and eventually Hovenweep. So there is quite a bit of traffic heading, tourist traffic heading to Hovenweep, and if you continue on 191, that goes down into bluff. So just to get our bearings. Highway Commercial has the following uses permitted. Just let you read through some of those, and all other uses in those listed are allowed through a conditional use permit. By definition, a conditional use is a land that because of its unique characteristics or potential impact on the county, surrounding neighbors, or adjacent land uses may not be compatible in some areas, or may be compatible only if certain conditions are required that mitigate or eliminate detrimental impacts. So that's our standard conditional use. Please keep these things in mind. We're looking for health, safety, and general welfare of the vicinity or anything injurious on the property. We want it to be harmonious with the existing neighborhood, and here are the conditions that I have itemized. Possible conditions. Plus or minus any that you see fit. As per our new ordinance that has not been legally adopted yet, we wanted these guys to be in compliance once it is. And so we put a cap on the density, that it cannot exceed the limit of nine units per acre. That would allow them with the six acres, that would allow them 54 slots, and they have 53. Must coordinate, obviously, with the Division of Drinking Water. They are planning on hauling water to storage tanks. We had quite some discussion on where we stand on this, and they would have to follow the recommendations from the water, from the Division of Drinking Water. Even if they're hauling water, we're not sure what that looks like for a commercial use, so they would follow those requirements. Comply with Health, Health Department for their septic. Comply with building permits, fire restrictions. Yes.
So what, what septic requirements?
Maybe let's, let's go look at it. Let me get to the map. So, since it's sideways, let me crank it around here. So just to give you an idea. So keep in mind, these are not hooked up. It's just parking for overnight use. So here's the RV spots, here's the tent sites up here. They are planning on having a septic filled here for an RV dump. So there would be one community dump. One of our stipulations is that because they're already putting in a septic, we would like to see the toilet facilities also on a septic. So whether they bring them down here and tap into the same septic, that septic would have to be engineered for this level of use. And then they have a little toilet shower reception here. So hopefully this gives you a little bit better idea of the visual of it.
And they do note, in the notes, that it will comply with the Division of Environmental Health, the RV dump.
Correct.
It specifies the toilets, though.
Yeah, so on here, they, they said composting toilets on their original plan. One of our conditions is we would like those to be on a septic. Some other things that have come up recently for this is drainage. Actually, here, let me show you on the Google. As we, as the southern half of the valley has been, or county has been flooded out, this property also got hit pretty hard because you have a major waterway here. You also have all sorry, I just realized you can't see my hand on the screen. You know, all of this is sloping down and just dumping into here. And so you have a drainage here from that talus field, and then you also have just this roadside drainage ditch. And so this one actually got hit pretty hard down, down in this area when we all got flooded out. So that was kind of a, a lesson learned without having anything there yet. So if we jump back over to our conditions, flip this around. We do, we did want them to provide a plan for drainage during major flood events. Those only come around every couple of years, but they seem to be happening more often than not. UDOT is going to need a permit. There's a stop sign right there that's pretty close to their, to their turnoff, so they might have to pull that back a little bit to allow the linear feet needed for that stop sign. They, we would like them to provide a camp post during their operational times. They will be here for a lot of it, and in talking to them, they said that they would also provide somebody to be, to be there at the reception. And then because of how many people are in one location, we wanted adequate trash removal plans.
Just a technical question about that. It, you know, there's one thing to have a plan, there's another thing to, must provide a plan and implement. And why is that language not in here?
We could use "and" implement behind all those plans.
Yeah, especially the drainage one.
Well, if it's not implemented, they lose their conditional use permit.
Right. So you're, you're just technicality of language and grammar.
Yeah.
Okay, that's easy.
Kristin, you, you could make implementation a condition before they start to use and have people come to the facility. You make that part of the condition.
Okay, the all, all conditions must be bet, if prior to business license?
Yeah.
Okay. I think they might be online. Nope, I'm looking good. Okay, I'll try to answer any questions. Any, any other questions you guys have? Yes, Ann?
Do the tent sites count as units? Because if so, that adds up to 70-something.
So we're kind of juggling two different sections of the new ordinance here. One is camping, and one is RV parks, and so we took the one that's more stringent and, and ran with a lot of that language. So the, the dispersed camping, we felt that they were still within bounds of the new ordinance. It was, the RVs is what we were mostly concerned with, and having that many RVs in one spot.
So on the RVs, my, my other question is that road to Hovenweep and Cracken Mesa, what's the condition of that road?
Pretty rough.
Right, so, I mean, is an RV going to take that road?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I've driven it, it's been a while, but it was rough, just in a
Yeah, it's
Yeah, it's, I mean, I don't know who's, who maintains it, how often, but it's going to add wear and tear. I mean, maybe not more than, so then it's already happening, but
And I think that's beyond our bounds.
Sounds kind of like a liability.
Have you seen the hills and corners and that?
Yeah, I, I think that's beyond our, our scope. But it is a rough road, and they haven't repaved a lot of it on Navajo on purpose because they want people to slow down. And so, but that's kind of beyond our scope of, of conditional use.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I thought it would be primarily 191 traffic.
Yeah.
Honestly, I feel like it's a pretty good spot.
It just seems like it's extremely large without a just seems like a lot of units for a dump septic system, and it seems like a lot of units without water to haul water to me.
And I don't know their, their scope of what that potable water looks like. Is that a refill station for an RV? Because your, your tank's not going to last very long. Or are they planning on just a little bit of potable water there for drinking water and, and the shower units, but they're counting on the RVs being stocked with water? So that, that could be an eye-opening thing for them when they actually start in practice where they can't haul enough water.
It's not, probably in our scope, obviously, but it's at the bottom of White Mesa Hill. So if you drive a truck, you jig-brake all the way down the
Right. Yeah, right.
So you don't take That's what I told my wife. So the next thing, you know, they'll be like, oh, well, we really would like to do something about this noise. Well, I don't know.
Yeah, same, same sees with Ann. I think that's beyond our scope. You're just going to hear that. But I, I appreciate the comments, like, it's, there are considerations with, I don't know if they've actually slept out there on site at night. Things to think about, or seeing a flood event, things to think about.
It's just pretty desolate right there. No vegetation.
It's very trashy right now. And so for someone to want to try in and make some improvements, I'm for it. But I don't vote. Any other questions, comments, concerns? I could try to.
Anything that anybody would like to add or subtract from conditions?
So just to clarify, we will add the So just to clarify, we will add the and implement language to those conditions.
Why can't they use well water? Do they just not want to dig a well?
They could and, and the Division of Drinking Water may require that for the amount of units that they're gonna have. So we felt if we left it as is, whatever they do, they have to, to, you know, hit those drinking water requirements. So hopefully they do a feasibility with them prior to them really putting in a bunch of infrastructure.
I just kind of wish they would do some feasible study before we approve, to be honest.
Usually they do.
Just because of that alone, if you do a, a commercial well, a, a drinking well, and I would assume right there, Ivans has did one with GIP, the Grazing Improvement Program. It's a nine-hundred-foot well and they're looking at a three or four hundred thousand dollar well. Then anybody that has an RV, you don't really wanna put well water in your RV, you'll find that out pretty quick.
It might, may shrink in size if it's not feasible.
Yeah, and that, I, I don't know, I mean, we definitely wanna uphold the drinking water stuff, but that's also kind of more business planning on, beyond our scope on their end.
Looks like there's a number, was there any fencing around this?
Um, there isn't and so with the fence out, that would be their responsibility to protect, their stuff from the other ranchers that are down there.
It's just open now and like La Grande and everybody dumps chips there when they're doing, gonna chip a road is what that pile is. Yeah, it's just a chip pile.
Anybody?
I would entertain a motion.
I, I just, I see how some of that's out of our scope maybe, but on the same hand, is it? I mean, if I mean, if they go ahead and build these facilities and haul water and find out, well, that's not feasible. You know, then you have this
The whole venture might not be feasible.
But I guess on the same hand, that's their money, so that's the way I see it. Okay, I'm not.
I also think that's the benefit of putting that all this has to be implemented before they open so that they do check the Department of Drinking Water requirements and they go through that process before they start.
Yeah, I think we, you know, Mac always reminds all of us, myself included, about we deal with land use. This is highway commercial. It's kind of our parameters.
Will they become, um, non-conforming in any way or form under the new?
I, I think under the new, the new stuff, they'll still be compliant.
Then I'll make a motion to grant, uh, or to recommend.
Approve.
Conditional use permit, sorry. Would we get the approval of the conditions?
Okay.
With, uh, with the conditions listed.
Listed plus the additional implementation.
Plus the additional implementation before, uh,
Operations, uh, before operations are allowed to start.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to approve a conditional use permit, allowing a prim, primitive camp and RV park at intersection Highway one ninety-one and two sixty-two. With the conditions listed, plus the implementation of those conditions prior to operations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
What was TC?
We got him.
Any opposed? Okay.
Aye. I don't love it, but.
Will you state that that passed?
Okay.
Trent, will you just state that that motion has passed?
Oh, motion carry.
Thank you.
Were you talking to me?
Trying to.
Well, I, I can't hear out of this ear.
I thought I was on your Goodyear side.
Cause Lloyd's there, even when he's not here.
Okay, so our, uh, next one is up out of La Salle. It's consideration and approval of a conditional use permit allowing for an airstrip for Pine Lodge. Um, this is up in the area of Old La Salle by Stephen Redd. So again, you can make a motion approving the conditional use with the conditions as provided or make a motion denying based on findings of fact. Um, on April fourteenth, the county received a conditional use permit application for an airstrip to be located on the north side of Highway forty-six in Old La Salle to serve the Pine Lodge development from Stephen Redd. Collectively, this property is two hundred and twenty-two acres, is currently zoned as ag. Um, and the applicant is planning on improving access to the site by constructing a small personal use dirt airstrip for occasional use. The airstrip will be eighty feet wide and five thousand two hundred feet long and will consist of compacted dirt. So just to get our bearings on this guy, fly over to La Salle. So it is, so here's the town of La Salle. So as you come up and over the mountain, it drops you into that big valley. And it will be right along here, so let me show you what that looks like, boots on the ground. Just to give you a little bit better idea of where we're at. So it's that really big, open valley location, so it'll be up here.
Is it, is Pine Lodge correct? The correct name of the lodge or is there
Pine Lodge is a historical name of the area. Uh, the address that they had out there is just a mile post off of Highway forty-six. It's all just pasture land.
So what's, where's the lodge?
Uh, there is no lodge per se, it's just the name of, of the area.
Well, it says
Just before you drop into La Salle Creek.
Yeah, I saw that on the map, but I guess supposed to service?
No, there, there is no lodge service, there, there's, there's a, I mean, you know, Old La Salle has several Airbnb stuff, but that has nothing to do with this airstrip project. This is basically an owner access, the owner lives in Spanish Fork and has a plane, will be, you know, it'll make his visits to his ranch more convenient for him.
So did I misread the staff notes that said something about servicing?
No, that's what the applicant said.
Oh, well.
So we can
What is
Well, there, there's, there's another lodge owned by the applicant called Hidden Oaks Lodge. But it's, again
I believe.
Same general area, but it's, um, you know, a couple miles away from, from the area we're talking about.
I think it's on the first page, Kristen.
This is Heather, I'm in La Salle and I believe that the Pine Lodge
So Heather, give me just a second, cause we can't take public comment on a, on a whim, so give us just a second, please. So you can see Hidden Oaks Lodge is here.
But this is not related to Hidden Oaks?
No, his house, he's building a new house over here. And, Curtis, I don't think we can take public comment right now.
Well, you're, you really need to because you're missing a huge element of this discussion. That's in your documents, it talks about neighboring residential areas and you're, it's totally absent. You've got a hundred and fourteen unit subdivision right at the property line where that runway ends and you can approve with a conditional use permit. And it's totally absent from your package, your documents and your discussion. It's in, and if you look at the conditions that you need to consider, the way that stands now is in serious violation of those conditions, so not, I mean, you you have, you, your planning commissioner has an application on the books right here that is in total, totally lacking the most serious component that should be considered, which is an approved subdivision at the property line where the runway ends and begins to the north.
Alright, so I'm sorry, but we can't take public comment right now? We needed to take public comment at the beginning, we just can't get into it.
We didn't offer public comment, I've been here for an hour.
Yes, we did. So I can't, I can't get into a discussion with the public, otherwise we're legally
We did.
We're out of bounds. So, but I think that your concerns have been addressed with the conditions listed.
Usually though
We can't, we can't, we're getting in trouble.
Usually we take public comment at the beginning
Yes.
For
Items not on the agenda.
Oh, items not on the agenda.
It's all, it's all public comments and we re, we redid that.
How is that not even happening?
I was told we couldn't
And then on each item, we would allow public comment on that item. So is this the time for a public hearing on this question?
This is not a public hearing.
Have you held a public hearing on this application?
It's a condit, it's a conditional use.
So it's not a public hearing?
This is not a public hearing.
But we could request a public hearing for
That we're in bounds legally.
They're just saying we changed what we're doing.
I know, because we got in trouble, we cannot have a discussion with the public.
Well, we understand that.
We are discussing
But we've always just let, Curtis can come up and have his three minutes, I don't
At the beginning.
Well, it's usually after you present the information.
Because we clarified that
So, uh, normal process is you have public comments at the beginning of the meeting. And then if you are here to make a public comment, not necessarily to take your, any item on the agenda, um, in the past have we allowed those comments to be made when we come up to the item? Or is it all at the beginning? If, if, if the, if the public is here to make a comment and it happens to be about an item on the agenda, but the only time to make comment is at the beginning of the meeting, then that's okay. But if you didn't make a comment because you didn't know that was the time, we probably ought to, you know, give the three minutes. That's, I would expect.
I just wanna make sure we're legally compliant.
I'm just trying to refresh my memory here, um, yeah. When there's an, an agenda item, it's really up to the discretion of the chair to allow anybody to talk during that.
And
Talking about the same event item.
And the way our public comment is defined, time reserved for public comment on items or issues not listed on the agenda, so I think we still need to, to take public comment.
Okay, go ahead.
So let me just ask you a question, so does the, has the public commented on this application at all? In any, I mean, was there notice sent out and all that kind of stuff?
No.
No, it's just
There wouldn't be
It's just in our agenda packet.
So in other words, it's not, it's not a public hearing item?
Correct.
Um, so as a condition then, you know, you gather the information, you have the staff's report, you rely on the staff to give you information and make your decision. If this gentleman has information you wanna hear, is part of your information gathering, it's okay to do that. But as Kristen said, you know, you have to, kinda have to have a, a meeting with some structure to it. And I guess my only point is this, if this gentleman thought his opportunity to make a public comment was now versus the beginning, it would be okay to let him make it now because he would have at the beginning anyway.
And I believe the reason for that, that Mac and I discussed is to not get into banters with the applicant.
Which makes sense, but if we clarify for, that the
So maybe we need to clarify any comments need to be at the beginning.
Needs to be all, but we can't limit it because otherwise, nothing on the agenda, there is no time for public comment.
So we'll just get rid of that on items not on the agenda.
Public comment, yeah, or not set for public hearings.
So for tonight, just as full disclosure, it's allowed, however, from this point forward, public comment needs to be in the cu, public comment period.
Well, I think that's problematic because we haven't gotten the presentation and all the facts and we haven't gotten to ask you all of the questions we need. And then it's nice to have other, you know, public weigh in, once we get all of the pre, things presented to us, because otherwise, it may be redundant, they may be bringing up things that, um, you're gonna cover anyway, or issues that, so I, I don't know, I like it when, like, we've done it before, we've always done it, where, when, when the item comes up, you give the presentation, then Trent usually, um, gives time for any public comment on it and then we
How we did it before was a legal thing, so that's why, that's why I'm trying to hold to it.
Do you wanna look into that?
But we will, we'll double check.
Can you hear me?
The difference between a public hearing and just public comment, people could come to these meetings and make public comment about anything on the sub, almost generally. And if they wanna comment on an item on the agenda, that's fine as well during the public comment period. Separate from that, you all decide what information you're getting. This meeting is for you to ask questions, you've got staff, it's provided quite a bit of data for you. And if during the meeting you come to the conclusion that you need more information, you're always able to gather that.
Are you the only one that can hear me, Todd, or can they hear me?
Mac, I can hear you. Boss is on.
Okay. So one of the things that we've been advised by USP is avoiding a public hearing and where, where we would solicit comments, public comments, out of turn and we didn't advertise it as such. Um, that's where you get into that, well, we actually had a public hearing, wasn't advertised as such. What I'd recommend is to go through the packet, if you're concerned and still concerned with the overall project itself, in our ordinance, by ordinance, uh, you as planning commissioners can suggest that you open it up to a public hearing. So you table the decision and then we can solicit it as a public hearing. But by taking public comments just out of the blue, that's where we got into trouble where it wasn't advertised and so, other people that may be in support of the project didn't get an opportunity as advertised to, to come in and weigh in. So it keeps it cleaner and it's the same thing with our, with our commission meetings, is we don't take public comments on the business items, all the public comments are right up front. Anybody can come in and say anything at that time, but
Okay.
Our by, our bylaws address this and our bylaws say we can, we can do what we think we can do. It said, Mac, it says, um, this is conduct during public meetings. Any member of the commission, counsel to the commission or the commission staff, upon recognition by the chair, may direct any questions to the applicant, witness, or any person speaking from the audience for the purpose of eliciting relevant facts. That's in the section, Article Four.
But we have to elicit that.
That has to come from the chair?
Well, it's
That's where we get into public hearing dangers on
Probably need to have a little further discussion on that, but, um, sir, state your name.
Curtis Wells, I'm a neighbor.
Okay. I know you.
Part of, man.
Curtis, would you mind coming up to the podium so we can get
So this is your, this is a
Well, you kinda already had one and a half.
Public comment before the meeting started, before the, before the beginning.
So, I guess one of the first issues there that kinda got my, my heart going is you have a the applicant, I, you know, selling or describing that this is just pasture, so on and so forth with staff. And you guys don't have this information in your packet that shows an approved hundred and eleven unit subdivision right here. So that's pretty frustrating, okay? And then to have to argue for public comment is also extremely frustrating. Usually on the front end of these, what I'm used to and I've been through a few meetings, is if there's any public comment on the front end before you get your presentation to enter into your discussion. So if the applicant is gonna be allowed to sell and pitch this application to you, then I think you ought to open it up to at least the neighbor. If you looked at a parcel ownership map, right where the, the land strip ends is right through the middle of a community that you all approved and there's an existing conditional use permit on that's a hundred and eleven units. The airstrip proposed is an appropriate width, but it's more than double the length of what typically you need for what they describe as a small airstrip. The landowner has not been a great neighbor, we've had some issues just by virtue of me buying the place and not being welcome. And so I'm pretty hot under the collar about this, guys, I've gotta protect my rights too, I came in and went through your process. I just finished a wetlands, uh, permit, or excuse me, survey with an environmental firm out of Colorado. I just finished a wetlands, uh, permit, or excuse me, survey with an environmental firm out of Colorado. The proposed runway is running right through this, right through the LaSalle Creek area, which I know in federal regulations you've got in the, in the conditional use permit, but, you know, that's a four oh four permit. So this is really like expansive, it's half caulked, it's being misrepresented in terms of the impact. I- in the own conditional use permit, it talks about the buffer zones need to be on their own private property and you guys need to limit the impact on adjacent uses. Well, I don't see that you've accounted for that at all, you didn't even know this community existed in your packet. Okay, so, um, I'm letting you all know, Mac, San Juan County know, if this is approved, I'm going to protect my rights. I'm gonna do it. And you should protect my rights too, because you gave me the right to do this and I've pursued and I've taken on investment and I'm putting in time and effort and money into making this happen. And the Reds owned all the land on that side of the LaSalle's, they've got plenty of room to put an airstrip somewhere, but put it down my throat. I wanna be clear about that, thank you.
What, can you just tell us which is your parcel that we're looking at?
So his is right here?
No, no, that whole, that forty acres and that whole property going up to LaSalle Creek. Now, all those squares there, keep going around, all the way up, all the way up, oh, I own everything in there.
And then the applicant owns here.
He owns the lodge right here and he's frustrated that I bought in there and now he wants to run an airstrip down my throat. I, I'm just being very candid with you guys, but it's that straight.
So it does have something to do with Hidden Oaks.
Well, whether it does or not, he's got it directed right at a hundred and eleven unit community that I have approved that I'm working on.
Which is on the southeast side.
Yeah.
It's here.
Wait, no, the airst, the airstrip is.
So here, follow the pointer, so it, Curtis's properties are right here.
Yeah, but the airstrip is.
The airstrip is right here.
And then the subdivision is.
He, he has it directed right through my community, my community is approved on this land. He has the airstrip, if you pull up the airstrip graphic, it's running right, right, right where he's flying over my, low front aircraft, right over a hundred and eleven unit community.
Okay, and what's down below then, at the southeast end of the strip? There, it looks like there's some other roads and, are there buildings down?
That's, that's his home that he's building.
Okay, that's all his stuff, okay.
But if it was, I mean, a logical thing to do obviously is to make it adequate length. But no matter where you slice it, the way it's set up, it's gonna have a major impact on my approval in my community.
Okay, so I wanna keep going with the packet.
I wanna make a comment for the, for the commission here. So this, this kinda clarifies the difference between public hearing and regular public comment. The commission is approving something, you know, it's this airstrip where they're considering it. And I think as you go through the conditions, you'll find that some of the safety considerations and size and buffer and all these things are in the recommendations and, you know, this gentleman has brought some of these up and that's fine and good, but I, I guess my point is, you know, your job is to look at the application, look at the conditions and recommendations, which I think address a lot of what was brought up. And if you feel that they, yeah, that's your decision, is if you feel that they adequately, you know, there are enough safety conditions, there's gonna be some investigation here and some work done before this happens, you know. I, I think the conditions you'll see will show that, you know, there is gonna be some study of the area and this, some, some recommendations by an expert about, you know, these considerations that were mentioned, so. A- anyway, I just want you to remember that you're approving once before you, with the information you have and the information that is gonna be developed based on the recommendation.
Right, with our recommendations.
Well, when we get to the condition, whether or not it impacts, how it impacts neighbors, you know, that's when we would be asking, well, okay, who, who are the neighbors?
So let's get to the conditions, just so we know what we're looking at.
And that would be part of the expert's review, would be the surrounding areas and.
So this is in an ag zone currently. So our, uh, possible conditions, plus or minus, if you have any changes. Um, the biggest one is that administrative staff, so myself, um, Mac, will work with our county airport engineer firm, um, on safety and hazards mitigation recommendations. And, um, so the, the airport engineering firm that we work with does the Monticello Airport and, and a few others, Cal Black. But they have a very extensive report. It covers everything from buffer zones to navigation easements in the air, you know, safety zones, emergency landing areas, um, and, and so we will be working with that consultant. The engineering expenses will be covered by the applicant at actual cost, so we're not making any money here. But ev- everything within that report, because this is such a niche kind of development, everything within that report will be approved, um, by our staff prior to a building permit or business license. Some of those, uh, conditions in addition to what's in that report are that flight patterns must avoid current residential areas to the furthest extent possible. Obviously, you're going to have to fly over somebody's house to land or take off anywhere, but, um, try to, trying to avoid those areas if possible. The extent of buffer and safety zones must be within owner's property boundary. So that means that this airstrip would get pushed quite a ways back from that property line. And then our usual building code and permit requirements, um, any federal fire restrictions and business licenses. So when we look at the application, yes, they have it here now. However, once we get a report back from that, that expert in airstrips, you know, it will have to comply with those recommendations, which will shift this, I imagine, quite a bit. Some of those recommendations also might require other federal, um, clearances. For instance, the, the waterway or drainage, um, may be required as well.
See, what you thought, did you know what like the setbacks were from the property line, did you mention that?
It, it's, that will be based on the engineer's response. But those buffer zones and those safety landing zones on both sides or emergency zones will have to be within the property boundary. We do have, uh, the applicant's representative here, Bruce Nebiker. So, um, Bruce, I don't know if you wanna speak to anything if you'd come up or if you have any questions for him directly.
Yes, if you have any questions, first I'd like to address those if possible.
Does he own a different piece of ground that he could put the airstrip on that?
He, he does have several options, we've looked, we've been looking at this project for probably three or four years. This is where his personal preference is, it's not his only option. So, you know, that, he, he is open to, you know, if there's something that, that's necessary, we're, we're not trying to shove this down anybody's throat. The intent of, the intent of this airport is not as a business, not as a commercial, not, it's not going to have heavy traffic. I've talked to the pilots who will be flying in there, they will be coming in from the south end and be departing from the south end because of the slope of the runway. So it's best to land uphill, take off downhill. So with the current intended use of this airstrip, there would never be any traffic over the, the development. You know, and he doesn't fly in every day, it's, you know, it's just not going to be a heavy use airport. The biggest noise, if that's what the neighbor is concerned about, would be when the aircraft would taxi up the runway, turn around and take off going the opposite direction. While the aircraft is at end, at that end of the runway, there would be some noise. But again, it's going to be extremely infrequent, I mean, probably less than once a week, I don't know. You know, I can't give you an exact schedule, but it really is a personal, private access. It's not intended for commercial use, it's not intended to ferry people or materials in and out of the area. It's, uh, simple, simply for owner access.
Do you feel the applicant would be, uh, agreeable to modifications to the airstrip? The expert, the air, the FAA expert, you know, recommends that, you know, so.
Oh, oh, absolutely, and, and, um, he is, like I said, this is his preferred spot. We've talked about others, uh, running parallels to the highway on the south side of the highway. We've talked about some down in LaSalle itself. You know, so we, we've looked at several options, um, this is his preferred option. As issues arise or if issues arise, um, we will deal with those in as amicable a manner as we can.
So Kristen, you said that there's probably gonna be a lot of changes to this before it actually goes through?
Correct. And that's, that's where we're deferring to a specialist because they know what they're doing versus us trying to regulate every condition and not being airport experts.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, but I, I do have a hard time that, um, we're approving this and then it's gonna change. And that's gonna be different than what we approved or, or did not wanna do.
Well, and I think this is where Mac and I had pretty, a pretty extensive conversation. We're approving again the use, that, okay, for use, we're allowing conditionally an airstrip here. Staff will coordinate, cause there are gonna be a lot of design criteria that we've gotta uphold on building permits and setbacks and, and all that. That you, that we felt you guys didn't need to be all in the nitty gritty. And so we'll just work with that engineer to produce recommendations and then we will follow those recommendations as, as far as building permits and making sure that what those recommendations state actually are happening. And for this, it might come back that it's not, to, to do all this, it's not feasible in this location. We didn't, we didn't necessarily wanna hold up applicants to, it's a lot to invest in that engineering report without them having speculation that they're gonna be able to do it. And so that's why we decided to do the, the use of it being conditionally approved before they put out all this money for an engineering report and, and what the design actually looks like.
Well, I personally would feel uncomfortable approving it as it is, especially given what this gentleman said. And that there are other options, I mean, doing it along the highway makes a heck of a lot of sense.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's, like I said, there's, there's possibilities there as well, there were reasons that we chose not to, but, you know, if, if, um, if this route is not viable, then we will look at other, other options.
Can you go up to the conditions?
I was gonna say, there's that one condition that I don't think you're able to meet.
Yeah, I think we're looking at the same one. The, uh, number two, flight patterns must avoid current residential areas to the furthest extent possible is the one that stuck out to me, but who's.
And that, that condition's pretty objective.
And that's, that's my concern is, cause to me, if there are other places to do it, that would be the furthest extent possible and not there, but.
I, I just kinda, you know, maybe on a broader part, kinda disagree with Kristen that there is a way to take off and land without going over homes, you know, like, I mean, there is, and that will.
Yeah.
Uh, a- as I stated, the, the current intent is for the takeoffs and landings to happen over the south end of the runway, not over the north. As you head north, it really doesn't make sense, you're heading right into the mountains, the ground is coming up while you're trying to climb and any kind of an emergency or whatever, you just don't have time to react. So the, the intent is to land from the south and take off to the south and we would not be flying over those homes and, um.
That's true, but the only little bit I've learned is wind matters and so you take off and.
Well, yeah, wi- wind does matter, but ground slope is actually more critical and the ground slope is to the southeast, so there's like a, a one and a half percent slope down. And yes, wi- wind, wind matters, but, and then as the gentleman kinda pointed out, the, the runway is intentionally much longer than is needed or required, more for safety than anything else. And if we have to shorten it by, you know, a thousand feet, as one of the conditions that the engineers approve, we can do that.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So, um, you know, again, we're, we're kind of here to, to get an okay that yes, this is, you know, as far as the use is, is viable. And if that's the case, then we'll invest in the engineering and, and other, you know, resources that we need, but. Like I said, I mean, we, we have options, um, and, and we'll, we're happy to look at those options, but we're kinda looking to get, you know, at least a, some kind of a conditional use approval before we move forward and have somebody say, you know, hey, we spent a hundred thousand dollars in engineering and then, no, you can't, you can't fly an airplane over there. So if the engineers come back and say, you know, that's really just not a, a good place or, you know, the conditions that you put on it, we say, well, we can't, we can't meet our needs and, and the conditions and we'll be back with another permit application somewhere else.
Can we see the parcel map again? So the airstrip, does it stay within one parcel or does it cross into it?
I believe it is all in one parcel.
I think it, it might extend just a little bit into this one.
But all of that.
Is all on, one owner.
It's all one owner, yes.
Okay, so. Can we make as a condition? Oh, gosh, no, we can't, cause it's hard for me to believe that you, that a property owner would invest that much without a plan for more development eventually, like, and, and resort or lodging or something in this area. And there's plenty of opportunity for that.
But you have to keep in mind, I mean, this property has been in the family for nearly a hundred years and they're ranchers and that's what they do. You know, that, they're not, to the best of my knowledge, they're, he, he's building his own private home there and he's not looking to bring in neighbors and development and all of that. Especially not in this specific area. As the other gentleman mentioned, right next to the airstrip, it is a marshland and we, we couldn't build down in there because of the conditions of the soil and the wa- the water that runs through there. It's the bottom of Chicken Creek. And so, you know, with the flood plain and need and all those issues, so, you know. All, all I can speak to is the intent that we have right now on this particular issue, on this particular airstrip. It's intended use, intended purpose and that kinda stuff.
Well, is there some way we can put that in the language where we hold this development to the limits that they are offering right now, which is, it is only for this property owner, it is personal use, you know? Because we had that issue with the helipad too, where it was like, hmm, yeah, but you could do tours. I mean, there's no way we're gonna.
Yeah, and if somebody else bought it.
Yeah, and then somebody else. Right, but you know, the use stays with the property, um, but, you know.
I believe our, our scope, just due to the applicant can only, like, we can't dictate what happens on the rest of those properties. We are vesting, if this is approved, we are vesting this airstrip.
And it makes no sense to just have an airstrip for one home. I feel like that's really not.
Well, and just keep in mind that anything additional would have, require additional permissions and approvals. So if you came in later with some other proposal, it would, it would have to go through this body and you, you can address your concerns at that time.
Because.
Yeah, I was trying to think it through, you know, like, I, I definitely feel like there's some concerns around the.
Yeah, and although it may not make sense to you with his, he has an insurance business in Spanish Fork, he lives in Spanish Fork, but he has his ranch that he's running down here, he has a full-time manager here and it's simply a time management issue. I mean, I promise you, there is no other hidden agenda that we're trying to slip under the table. Otherwise, you know, we probably would've just taken a bulldozer, cleared a, a path through the brush and he'd be landing on, on that, you know. But we want to do things properly, we wanna do things correctly and, uh, we're being a hundred percent upfront with the intended use.
So, so we're using our twenty eleven ordinance for this one. And this, that talks about it has to be harmonious, so it can't be injurious and has to be harmonious. So it can't be injurious and has to be harmonious. And I'm hearing that it's not, at least neighboring, people do not think it's harmonious. It's introducing a new element into the neighborhood. Yeah. So under, I, I, I think under our current ordinance, it's, we don't have to approve.
Oh, yeah, no, you don't have to approve anything. That's why we're standing here and asking.
We have to say why, why we don't think it's a, it's a good idea. We have to, we have to actually verbalize it.
So do we think this needs a public hearing? Do we, do we have enough neighbors impacted that this warrants a public hearing? I don't know. I mean, I've just seen one property owner, but are there others? That need?
Looking at this, my guess is Curtis is the only property owner we're going to see on this, but our goal here is to invite people to move into our county and to grow our county. And what Curtis has done by creating this development is, is harmonious with that. And is this going to make it less desirable, living at the end of an airstrip? For those people moving into this neighborhood?
I, I'm with Melissa there. The harmonious thing is the thing that I'm trying to balance.
Sky Ranch.
I'd make a motion to dismiss or to table until we gather some further information and on the grounds that it's not harmonious and doesn't meet, I'm unable to satisfy myself in the second condition listed. You can read that if you'd like, but I don't think that is, is attainable.
Can you, I just want to make sure we have the proper language.
Okay.
Maybe dismiss.
Well, I table, I will table.
But until.
Until, until we can.
Or do you need more information from the applicant? Like, tabled until what? Or are you just voting no?
Well, I would like to at least, even on the no, I would like to be better informed. But I don't think it's harmonious as it exists in the packet today. And I don't think that they can fulfill that second condition in the staff's report. So we could re, we could put it back for another motion, but those are the two things, the three things that I would like, I'd vote no against. And so if we, we can either vote no on those.
So those are your options, or table it, but if we table it, table it until what is proven?
Well, I would like to at least see, go back personally and see what we approved for Curtis and his development. Because I am uninformed on that entire development, that we gave him a conditional use permit for tonight. So personally, that's why I would table and then I would like.
Are you making a motion?
I would make, like the applicant, yes, I'll make a motion, and like the applicant to, to further expand on the harmonious, how he feels like it's harmonious and the, the second condition, basically the setbacks and flying over the conditional use permit, the neighboring property that we've already established or given or. Legal chance, put something in there.
Well, it sounds, it sounds to me like some of you would like to have more of a public hearing type meeting where you get information, but also remember that regarding the airstrip itself and the safety of it and the setbacks and so forth. Those are things that the experts that we're working with now in these other airports, that, those are the things that they will come in and recommend. So, so just for example, it could be that if one of them were here tonight and had a bunch of data, they could say, yeah, at this point, what we think is that airstrip is going to have to move like this. And so it's going to, it's going to be moved this way so that it's X number of feet from.
But at that point, and I understand that he needs to be vested in order to spend that money.
He doesn't have to be.
But, um, but at that point, we've already vested him. And so it's not going to, I can't come back and say, well, you're still flying over. You're still flying over Curtis's conditional use permit that we approved by 120 units. And so it's out of my hands. So I feel like it, it doesn't allow to make good public land use decisions at this board by, by putting it off to some other expert. I understand they're an expert in their field. But I also understand that that is, you know, the parameters and how it sits, but I can't, I don't think it's necessarily a good land use to fly over. Just to fly over that other, and, and I'd like to see what we did on Curtis's too, what we approved, because I don't know tonight.
But the property owner could invest their own money in engineering and work with Curtis on something that's, that's acceptable, right? So they don't have to necessarily use these experts. They could hire their own engineer to figure out what would be feasible to satisfy the property owner's needs of just getting him from point A to B without upsetting the neighbors. And then, so they could work it out, come back with a new plan.
We, we did want, by the end of the day.
Can I second Cody's?
Yeah, let me just say something real quick. We did by the end of the day want to have them go through our engineer because otherwise you get conflicting messages depending on who's hiring them. And so we felt that our county engineer would be the most unbiased looking at things. So yes, they could invest in their own design work, but we want our engineer to at least review that as an unbiased perspective. And yes, you can second it.
I'm going to second it.
Hey, hey, hold on, before we, can I speak up before we vote on that?
Sure, go ahead TC.
Hey, awesome, thank you. So in, if I'm reading this right, in the current agricultural zoning, an airstrip is a conditional use, right? Am I reading that right?
Correct.
Okay. And we've also discussed, hit on it just lightly, something about a buffer zone around an airstrip also to be included on, on, on the same property or the same plot. Is that also correct?
Correct.
And what is that buffer zone?
So that's what the engineers would look at. It depends on the type of planes landing there. Whereas this is a dirt airstrip and it's not very wide. You're not landing jumbo jets out here. So the buffer zone's going to be a lot smaller. And the safety zones are going to be a lot smaller due to the planes on it.
It seems like when we discussed this before, it was like fourteen hundred feet on both ends of the runway.
For Sky Ranch, it was something about, about like that.
Okay, so, so we, we know that there is going to be a buffer zone and, and some engineering review, but we don't know what it is.
Correct.
Right? So we, we don't have any way of knowing if the, the plot map that, that Stephen presented us here meets, meets our requirements for a buffer zone. I mean, because that's.
I'll say it, we know it doesn't at this point in time. And if the use is allowed, we would work through that design concept with them.
I don't, I don't think we should, well, TC, I don't want to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Uh, go ahead, Melissa.
Well, I was just, you know, I just have a hard time imagining that we would approve something where it, it doesn't, it's, it's not right yet, you know.
Well, we're, we're putting, we're, we're putting a lot up to stake at an engineering review and staff's discretion.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, other locations have been acknowledged. Talk about that, right? They've offered other options.
I think one of the reasons that we like the engineer study on it, when you look at state code under the aeronautical section, it has a lot of, a lot of code described for a public airport. Public airport has to have a buffer of five thousand feet. When I measured this plat out, just looking at the site plan, seemed like the airstrip of, if I remember right, was six thousand feet and there wasn't five thousand feet at the end of this runway. But when you look at it a land use perspective, I mean, the airport engineers are going to know what a safe buffer is from the distance of Curtis's property. That's their expertise. It's not, it's not a land use expertise that we were, can decide on. It's something that those people that design airports would know, not us as staff. I mean, we look at it from a land use angle, but it was, there were just some concerns from the staff's side of it is, you know, how, how do we know what that buffer is? The state had weighed in measures, there was a bill this last year that was presented, it didn't go very far on private airports and private landing strips. But it wasn't approved. And so it's like, well, let's, let's get those engineers to take a look at it and, and have them come up with the hazards that they see from a land use perspective. All we're looking at is trying to mitigate the, the health and safety and, and kind of like, you know, how, what's the effect, kind of like the harmonious conversation that you've had regarding that adjacent property owner.
I think we, we had quite a bit of discussion. Private airstrips is not, they're not regulated by FAA. And so we were having a hard time finding, you know, the how to design criteria for a dirt private runway.
Because it is private, it's not public.
Right.
And, you know, pilot, pilots know that private airstrips are completely off limits with the exception of an emergency. You know, if your engine's out, you land wherever you can. That's all, if it's in your pasture, if it's in a highway, all the rules go out the book or out the window when you're in an emergency situation. But other than that, without prior permission, a pilot cannot land on that private airstrip. So the, the use is going to be so extremely limited that I believe that many of the concerns are, are kind of like the, the water rights and other things that are going on. You know, you're going to take our animals away from us. It's, they're concerns that are, are just really never going to happen.
I guess like I stated in my motion, I'm not necessarily concerned about the engineering. It's the harmonious and then it's the other condition of the direction and to have that not fly over what we've already done.
And again, as I stated, the, the plan is not to be flying over that direction anyway. There's too many hazards from a aircraft safety standpoint to be trying to climb up the mountain. In fact, my uncle was killed because he headed up a canyon thinking he could climb and the ground came up faster than his airplane could climb. So climbing uphill in an airplane is not a smart idea. So the, the takeoffs and landings would be in the opposite direction.
So just, just, just one last thing real, real quick, I'll hop in here. You know, we've discussed a lot of, a lot about harmonious uses and I know, I know we've heard at least from one landowner here and, and I think we were in the middle of maybe making a motion to table until we get some more public comment, or I'm hoping that was maybe part of the motion. I just want to say two things. I, I think I would be in favor of, if that motion's made, tabling it until we can get some more, some more comment on the issue. I know that Mr. Wells might be the only landowner that shows up, but I think it's important that we give other folks an opportunity to speak as well. And on that note, I also see that Mr. Redd is online with us and I don't know that he's had an opportunity to speak here. So Trent, I guess if you, if you think it's kosher and, and the right thing to do, maybe, maybe we give him the floor for a minute.
And yes, he is online.
Steve, do you have anything you want to comment on? With the discussion? If you're trying to talk, we can't hear you.
So I, I think I might have ran into this last week when I was trying to speak at the, at the county commission meeting. I had to close my browser and then get back into the meeting before my, before my thing would come off of mute. So maybe that's an issue here.
Letting know we can hear.
I'll reach out to him if he has any comments. I'll have him look at things.
We have a motion and a second.
Real quick, do we want to have a public hearing because?
Stephen has sent me just a couple of comments if you had time.
Here he is, he's on.
Okay. One thing that was mentioned or that Stephen points out to me here via text is that at the RV park, he basically mentioned that if it wasn't a public hazard related to improper land use, then it isn't in the scope of the, your, your scope of, of land use stuff. So, you know, he's, if we're not creating a public hazard, which I understand, you know, there's different opinions here, but some of the comments that were made earlier in regard to the RV park about in, being outside of your scope as far as, you know, whether the highway was suitable and all that other stuff. So. The other thing is, and, and I've mentioned this, that, that the direction of the, of the airport and the, the elevation and all of that is the factor of the length. It's not that, again, we would not be flying to the north. But the longer runway would allow a safety factor for the airplanes to get off the ground and, you know, be able to climb prior to getting to the end of the valley going south.
I'm on now, can you guys hear me?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, there's Stephen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I managed to hang up on myself, there's unmuting. Wow, I had no idea we were going to have so much fun tonight. Appreciate you guys taking the time to discuss this. What Bruce has represented is, is accurate. I don't know how familiar you guys are with the property. On the south end is a brand new home that Jamie Johnston is building for me and is almost completed. And that is the reason for this location. I feel very bad that Mr. Wells thinks this would be anything intentional to him, has nothing at all to do with him and a hundred percent in favor of adding whatever kind of buffer is needed on that upper end. I'm sitting here with my son who's a pilot and Bruce as a pilot's been talking to you. Anyone who has actual knowledge of that knows that even if we had, we could legally fly to the, the north like that, it would be the dumbest thing we could do. This, this slopes down. Because of the way this got off today with confusion about public comment and, and Mr. Wells' strong feelings about it, which are very different when I'd heard from him before. I don't know why we're there, but that is what it is. There's an immense mistrust. I've heard multiple times that I must have some other reason for this. I built way too expensive of a home. I have no business building that I want to make sure I can, can fly into and to be on my ranch. And that's the truth. And that's why it's located right here and why we're not doing it miles away somewhere else. And I would just encourage the, the commission to be consistent. You can define harmonious many different ways. I didn't necessarily love, the love, anytime someone builds next to me, an argument could be made, that's not harmonious. But we will, we will follow the law and there's no intent other than to, to use our own land. And I appreciate you looking at it that way and not turning into the county where you create so many hoops to jump through that have the opposite effect of, of what you're trying to do. So I, I, I would just like to ask you to, you know, if you're going to lean on experts, lean on them. You, just like you approve a, a building permit or a subdivision based on the health department doing the septic and approving that. I was, when I was on the commission, we did that many, many times. That had to happen. That's no different than this. And so I, I would just encourage you not to create new, new rules, but to follow the ones you have. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, I think anything, every time we've had something like an airstrip or a hel, helipad, I've asked for a public hearing. So to be consistent, I feel like, I, I think we need to have a public hearing. For better or for worse, Cody, I know you don't like them.
No, I, I mean, I mean.
I think it's potentially impactful. I know right now it might not sound so impactful. I think it's potentially impactful, I know right now it might not sound so impactful, but. We have to think in the to the future too. Once it's built, it's built and it's usable and the next owner might come along and say, I want to use it more and. So, I don't know, I just think everybody that owns property out there right now should weigh in. And if they don't show up, they don't show up. But at least we've done our due diligence to listen to the public. Give them, you know. Especially to address this harmonious.
No, I would just go back and say like, no, I I think public comment totally has its place and public hearings has its place and. And I feel like especially where obviously we were unaware of how. We had always ran the meeting, how the meeting had changed a little bit. Is that fair to everybody how we had done? You know, public comment on anything that's not on the agenda, that was just been since I've been here and then. Tonight it was a little different, and so we kind of started off on a bad note, but I I've. Even just from an edge, like I said, we're gonna look at what Curtis did. And and what we approved there, because I'm unaware, uninformed tonight. And and so I I feel like we should have some more public comment or a public hearing as well, but.
Will you revise your motion in a full statement including?
Oh, my goodness, so.
Or you can just say motion to table with a public hearing. We already have your findings and facts.
Motion to table with a pub- and with a public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay. Get a motion in a second to table. The consideration of a CUP for an airstrip. Um, based on harmonious and call for a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yeah, we have no problem with that, we're totally happy.
Is your dad still flying?
No, he's, his health is not allowing him to do that anymore, so he he's gotten rid of his airplane. My brother does still fly though.
Okay. Next one on the list. Uh, similar in nature, however, this one's a heliport. Um, for Desert Rose Tours, this is on Chimney Park Road. Um, it's kind of up high on a sitla parcel above bluff, but on Highway one ninety-one. Um, by Amr Tumay who's here tonight. Um, same recommendations, making a motion to approve, using findings and conditions provided by staff or denying. Based on findings of facts and the following reasons. June sixteenth and um, Amr and I had been in discussions for quite some time, he was really waiting for the new ordinance. But we're moving ahead, but we've been discussing this since April, April, March. Um, so he's also been waiting a while.
Why was he waiting for the new ordinance?
Just to keep things clean. Um, I'll, as a quick side note, Melissa, I don't think it's gonna be passed anytime soon, so. We're not gonna make people wait any longer, we're moving forward. Um. The county received a conditional use permit application for a heliport to be located at Chimney Park Road. Um, this is a sitla leased parcel of five acres. The parcel's currently zoned as highway commercial. Um, the applicant is planning to build a sixty foot by seventy foot metal building to operate tour business and hangar helicopter. There'll be a lobby, storage, mechanic shop and staff housing with an eighteen foot by twenty-four foot built out portion of the building. Um, and the building will be adjacent to a concrete helipad designed as per um FAA guidelines. The FAA does have a lot more guidelines for helicopters and fixed wing. Um, for private and publicly use, um, so that was helpful for us during research that there's a full book of design standards. Which is fantastic. Um, site improvements will include security fencing with gated access driveway and parking areas. Um, it's an off-grid system, so solar panel system for power, water system via well and an engineered septic tank and leach field. Um, to show you where this is at. Chimney Park Road, actually here, let me go to the parcel fabric. So Chimney Park Road is here, so all of this up top is sitla. Um, and this site location's right here, so it's how many miles?
It's six miles from the center of town.
Six miles out of town. Um, if you are familiar with this area, it's a whole lot of desert up there.
There aren't any neighbors over there.
There are no neighbors.
Nothing not to be.
There's no residential to fly over. Um.
Where is the line for um incorporated bluff?
So it is right here, so it is just beyond town limits.
Well, I'd like to approve it just based on that. Bluff is the largest city in the state and they tried to take.
That's why it had to be six miles out. So it is highway commercial, um, you can see some of those things that might be. Semi harmonious, um, as far as like, uh. You know, machinery and and service stations and having gasoline and that sort of thing around. Um, again, airports, heliports were all conditional uses. Um, and we have a pretty similar uh, possible conditions. Before we jump into those conditions, I want to show you the the plan. Um, there is uh, I'll read the conditions in just a sec. So um, I will say Amr's application was exceptionally thorough, and I appreciate that. Um, he's done a lot of work on this to get this project uh, very well put together. Um, here's sitla's sign off on it. And I already showed you, so here's just the the leased section. Um, he does already have UDOT permits. Um, and and road access agreements and all that in place. Zoom in here, you can see what this looks like, so he's not using a lot of the five acres. It's actually a pretty small operation. Um, with that hanger and um, the helipad, it's a pretty simple standalone unit. Um. And he already has a lot of the the agreements and approvals for power and. Roads and all that permitting. So um, as far as like doing due diligence, I I feel like he's done a very good job. Um, this is the engineering uh, documents for the building. It's a, it's a prefab unit, right? Um, so it's a prefab standalone unit. Um. Like I said, about forty by eighty, or sorry, sixty by eighty. Um, with that eighteen by twenty-four. I'll show him the drawings of a built out unit, so here's all the engineering for that building. Let me jump down to the drawings of the built out. There we go. So here's that built out area. Um. And here's a little more of what it looks like, there'd be a restroom out there and a lobby. Um, and mostly just storage area. And then upstairs would be a, a basically studio-esque apartment, well, you have two of them.
There are two of them, that's behind the lobby.
Um, because as you know, housing is limited. Um, one of the conditions we have with this is that this housing cannot be used as an overnight. Short-term rental, so this is used for staff to be at, um, for the security of operations up there. Um, especially when there's a helicopter sitting there. So let's jump back to, any questions on the floor plan?
I just have a question about where the fuel's gonna be stored.
I have a fuel trailer.
You have a fuel trailer?
It's UDOT certified.
Okay, and that falls within those guidelines that the FAA? Does that?
As long as it's approved by UDOT, then we can take the landing airport fuel out and bring it back.
Oh, I gotcha, okay. Yeah, um, the heli- helicopter regulations was really precise. It was very helpful versus the the private airstrip that's like, oh. Um, and so basically, same thing, we'll consult with our airport engineer from the county. And just make sure everything's svelte, um, any hazards mitigations. Um, you know, flight patterns, there's not much to avoid up there other than rocks. Um. Buffer and safety zones if we need it. Uh, and the the main thing with this one is that those employee housing units won't be used as an overnight. Amr, do you have anything else you want to come up and speak to or?
Very thorough.
Yeah. I just have one question about, um, and and this does not have to do with land use, but it just sort of has to do with how you're gonna handle this. What if there's a um, an incident, you know? Um, I know that was a concern when you were trying to get it in bluff, but what if there was some sort of an emergency? How are you gonna handle that?
As far as the helicopter going down?
Yeah, the helicopter going down.
I used to be a voluntary firefighter.
Oh, were you? Okay.
Uh, my son is the helicopter pilot. Uh, the chances of somebody walking away from a helicopter crash are minimal. Uh, as far as fuel trucks, you know, that's something that we used to go on as firefighters. A few months ago, there was a uh, fuel tanker that rolled over by.
The S, yeah, the big S turn.
So, the the pilot department is is ready for things like that.
And I can speak also on the bluff fire department, that we've been on several airplane crashes throughout the years. And it's just like anything else, sometimes it's a skid off the runway and everybody's fine. But, like you said, there's probably not gonna be a whole lot to salvage if a rotor comes through the cabin.
Trust me, I tried to talk my son out of coming to helicopter pilot. There's six thousand parts on the aircraft, each one almost a kilo.
Yeah, I think that's something we, I know even as a county that we train on. That kind of thing, Moab Fire especially, your guys is big airport, I think you've had trainings out there.
And I'm sure Tammy has a big emergency operations plan for the whole county. That cover that type of thing.
Even the the lodge, we've had the bluff fire department over a number of times, do training, there's a. Key logs where, you know, come up around, they can unlock it.
And and the the other thing that I, you know, the town of Bluff was so upset about when you presented it was. Flying through the town of Bluff, so is there any? Any plan to, I mean, how are you going to handle that? I don't know how flight plans work.
Six miles out.
Well, six miles out, you're going up, but are you gonna go up this, are you gonna go down the San Juan or?
Yeah, the town of Bluff, but uh, two mile radius from the bridge.
Yeah.
That um, they basically just wanted to keep you having my hanger at the Desert Rose. And I I tried to negotiate with them, our flight path, I've been in Bluff for thirty-two years, um, I've always been a good neighbor. Our flight path was to come in over the flood plain, land, load people up and leave. No one in town would have even known that we would be off. Um, and that's what I tried to negotiate with them. FAA is the one that controls airspace, we still want to continue to be good neighbors. I'd like to get to the point where we get this business going and, you know, things rolling, so.
I live across the street and I'm pro helicopter. I just want everybody to know that.
Was that done in a public hearing?
That's just a personal opinion on public record. I had to fight a lot of old ladies at coffee. Yeah, I think, uh, from a community standpoint, it's cool, let's do it. Um, we have one kid out of Bluff that wants to come back and do something. Nobody else has come back, we're dying.
Well, that's not true, no, that's not true.
Melissa, you're in the fifteen-year category. We're dying, we have a kid that wants to come back and try something. That's cool.
I'd entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve with the conditions that staff has listed.
I'll second it.
Get a motion and a second to approve a conditional use permit. For Amr Tumay. Um. Think it's a great project. And I think you've been beat up down there every time you turn around. You try to be a good neighbor, but they don't be a good neighbor back.
Will you vote already?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that only didn't request a public hearing because there were no neighbors.
Any opposed?
There are no neighbors. It is nowhere, it's it's in the middle of nowhere.
Okay, the next one's um, in association with this for a sign permit, also a very thorough job. Um, so a sign per- permit associated with the Desert Rose Tours. Um, we have that one linear s- uh, one square foot sign area per linear foot, street frontage. Um, is basically the the rule we have in the two thousand and eleven ordinance. Um, he is, this counts, um, as long as it doesn't exceed a forty-five degree angle, it counts as a two-sided sign. So that's why we, it it only, the square footage only counts once, as long as it's not above forty-five. I don't know if those hand gestures made that clearer or worse.
Well, it's ninety-six square feet and the ordinance says it has to be less than a hundred.
Correct, yeah. So that was designed as as. He wanted it to be. So um, there it is, it's gonna be on concrete, because as we know, the wind gets zipping out there. Um, you can see the structural support, it's actually doing that forty-five helps structurally to keep it. Keep it upright, so the wind doesn't take it. Um, so there is that, any questions on this sign?
I'm just curious, what's it going to say?
No comment.
You know, it's like, you know, it's it's a very good-looking sign, but what is it going to say?
Our new motto for the business owners of Bluff is we don't know bluffing, so we'll probably. Now, we'll we have our logo, we'll probably refer people, I mean, we're gonna have a lobby right there, but we've. It's just gonna advertise the fact that it's a.
Helicopter tours?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve in a second. The sign permit. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Building permits.
Yeah, this is the quickest meeting we've had in like eight months. Okay, here's our building permits for the month.
Hey, question. There's a lot of gravel going out to Home of Truth out in that area.
Where's that?
Uh, photographic gap. Still.
Okay.
Highway two eleven.
Okay. Google map me.
Um.
Up out of Monticello here? Church Rock.
Yeah, just.
Okay.
Past the Glampers.
This way. Thanks, Amr. This way?
No. Um, come up. Where the the road curves.
Here.
Yep, that's photographic gap.
Okay.
So. Someone's building roads and talking air PMPs and.
Is it our own team because the road got washed down?
No, it's.
So is is it down this one of these?
It's right in the corner.
Oh, it's right here?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, is this a cult following place? Okay, I know that one, all right.
But I just wonder if anybody's came in and talked to you about.
Uh, not that I'm aware, but I'll check with Ben. Not that I'm aware, but I'll check with Ben and we'll flag it with our business license, see if they're going for business license. We do have, on that quick, quick note, because I know Cody wants to leave, we do have quite a few business licenses that are in pending for the new ordinance. And so we'll just check if we haven't granted them one yet or where they're at and make sure they're on our radar.
Well, I've heard remodeling going on, so you might have been, check that out.
Okay.
Kristen, some of these conditional uses that we've had over the past years, people will ask, "Well, whatever happened to such-and-such?" You know, development that got approved. Is there any way that there's updates that can happen on what is happening with that?
Well, since I've been here, yes.
Okay.
I still have people calling me all the time, "Hey, I got a conditional use. I can't find it." And in our meeting minutes, they didn't list any conditions. So there's quite a bit of, we can find it eventually, but it's quite a bit of digging in the archives for me. So what I'll say is the past, unless you really want to, I'm pulling 14-hour days, so if we could whittle that down a little bit, that'd be great. But if you really want to deep dive something that's important to you, we can. Otherwise, I'm gonna say from December, I've got a handle on it. The folders are color-coded and dated and svelte. But digging up the past has been wonky.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, is the county regulating the conditional uses, if they haven't done anything on it in a year, they have to come back, right?
Right. And that's also regulated with our building permits. Building permits are technically by code only good for six months. We've been allowing a year. So if all of a sudden...
For example, yeah.
Right. So if they haven't made significant progress, which is up to staff objectivity, if they have not shown significant progress, then they are starting over. And that goes for conditional uses, building permits.
We gave another one where this road turns back to the west for helicopter out there.
And the reason why is that we can have things on our radar. If people are serious about doing it, then get after it. But we don't want things to be floating out there for 10 years and holding up other moving pieces if they haven't made progress. And I do know there was one comment, based on the airstrip in La Salle, there was one comment on Curtis', Curtis's property that he hasn't made any... Here he has his conditional use, but he hasn't done anything. So are we holding up other developments with this like indefinite, you know, "Well, I have this big dream of doing something, but I haven't done it in 10 years." So I think we need to weigh all that. And as we dig a little deeper for that particular case, I'll pull his conditional use. I know I had to dig deeply for that one and find his permit. So I'll recheck the dates on it because it was an older...
Are you talking about Curtis's?
Yeah.
Well, he did mention something about an engineering study having to do with the creek that he just completed.
Yeah. So and sometimes we might have to have people prove, prove it, but digging a fence post isn't significant progress.
I want to go, but I guess I'll mention the ordinances and the public comments that we received. And I do think there is, there is some serious need for a little tweaking on those. We talked about public hearing. I thought it was laughable that we got the overnight ordinance a day before. And then we talked about, well, there's no comments. I mean, that ordinance itself, as you talk to people in the community, is a big deal. And hasn't been commented on because nobody knew what it was.
You're saying it's a short-term rental?
Yeah.
You got it?
Well, no.
Okay.
But we saw over Melissa's shoulder, we read quite a bit of it. And that, that's, I mean, I don't know. That is my, that is a joke, an absolute joke to me. Be like, "Oh, this is what we're doing?" You know, like, because nobody knows that. "Oh, we're gonna do..." Anyways, we can go into it another night, but I definitely feel like there's, we're close, but there's still some work to do.
I agree.
Well, with that, just let it sit because there's nothing to be done right now.
I was glad not to talk about it tonight until Cody just broke it up.
I was glad the meeting got canceled. Because I didn't, I didn't like the position I had been put in. So...
We weren't ready.
Could I make one comment about that? I drove 14 hours to go to that meeting. And when I got here for the meeting, there's paper on the door. It would've been nice to have had some notice.
Yeah.
You had as much as we did.
Understandably, that's why I got, don't get upset, but you know...
I've been home for three days.
Motion to adjourn.
The only way to fix that is to sign up for the public notice notifications, because that, it'll, it'll come into your email. And so that'll tell you...
Good, Ben.
I, I, I was in the district Wednesday morning. I got my return missionary. And then car still here from Tuesday morning and they went home.
We were all a little blindsided.